Uh. I need to make a motion to add to the executive session of part B for potential litigation pursuant to RCW four two dot three zero dot one one zero. Sub. One sub I. There's a second, which numbers have eight? Eight B, it'll be eight B. Second, same, all right. Uh, any discussion? Now, appearing all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, say nay, all right. Uh, approval of the agenda, anybody else have any other adjustments? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I suppose they nay, nay, all right. That's um. Mark Lawrence, he communicated one way or the other. Okay. Um. Mike Todd from Mill Creek, our uh. For representative of Mill Creek said he may or may not appear tonight. It's been a long day for him and expecting a long city council tonight, so I thought I understood that statement, he's not gonna make it, so with the absence, um, with my excuse. Uh, the consent agenda. Have a motion to pass the two items in the consent agenda. Uh, Commissioner Teal Black, motions, there is a second, second, second by Commissioner Farinahoff. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post a name. Probably carries public comments, everybody from the public that wishes to speak. Do not, um. Is there anybody? All right. On to fire chief's report.
Good evening, commissioners, staff, um, guests that are watching via Zoom, short fire chief report tonight. Uh, commissioners, I passed out a little bit earlier, uh, a letter that we received from the husband of a resident in Lynnwood where Station ten and Station sixteen responded earlier this, uh, last month in December. Uh, if you have a chance to read that narrative, I won't go into great detail, but, uh, some key things about thanks to the incredible care. Uh, those that responded and cared for, uh, the patient during a very critical event. Uh, really just a, the whole situation where from the start of the nine one one call until transport to a local area hospital, just high praise. So, uh, want to thank, uh, Chief Maxwell for adding this to the fire chief report and say thank you. And I want to talk about, uh, the responders for that call primarily, which was on medic ten, Henry Patterson. Alexander Johnson, Paul Stead on medic sixteen, Captain Andrew Irish, now Captain Zachary Cash and firefighter Nick Davy. So, a great job by our crews and appreciate the input from a resident within the city of Lynnwood where we did great work. So, thanks again, Sean, for bringing that forward. And then commissioners, just to let you know, uh, we have an event, the neighborhood night open house at Mill Creek Station seventy six. On Thursday, January twelfth, from five thirty to seven. This is our first neighborhood night out since the onset of the pandemic. We'll be having another event at Fire Station thirteen Silver Furs on February ninth from five thirty to seven. And then this Saturday, January fourteenth, eleven AM to one PM scout day open house at Mariner Fire Station eleven, understand that we're gonna have some commissioners, um, at, at Station uh, eleven event and hope to see all of you there at both of those. So with that, that's all I have for the fire chief's report tonight, broken any question for myself or staff, thank you.
Chief, could you include the event on Thursday night for seventy six?
Yes, I do.
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear that, that's all right, sure.
So how many, how many, how many scout, I think, I, 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 I think I attend the last one. Is this one troop or? Does any, any scouts?
Uh, it's one big troop, I believe, that's consolidated, we'll know how many are there when we, we see them.
So, okay, so I, should I get my old scout unit book to see I can fit in there and come in?
If it fits, it's not wrong, it's not wrong.
All right, I, I'll try.
Once you see how it always to scout.
Yeah.
So, sure, then I'll be there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Um. Chief, I think we have another chief here. He's been gone for a little while.
Yeah, yeah, we welcome back, uh, Chief Isatello, here, it's back today, so, uh, Jason started back one day and had a great day yesterday and a better day today. We had a good chat just talking about that and family and just getting into the new year and looking forward as an RFA, uh, to great things in twenty twenty three, so.
Did they tell you that the salmon you left in the refrigerator got eaten?
Wonder what?
Welcome back.
Thank you. Welcome back, Chief, thank you, did look good with your beard and, uh, that was a nice picture of your, uh, necessary.
Thanks.
Dog. All right, and on to the union report with, uh, President Moore.
Good evening, commissioners, um, good to see you guys in person again down here, so. Um, came down tonight, uh, we went over to the city of Mill Creek, uh, the local had, uh, presented the city council mayor, um, with a commemorative uh, acts from the local, uh, basically commemorating the joining of the RFA, thanking them, letting them know that we're happy to be serving that community. And, uh, we also presented each, uh, council member with a, uh, uh, coin from the local as well, uh, in a nice little case, so. Um, that was a nice event we were able to do tonight, I know we're looking at, uh, possibly trying to do something here to also commemorate, uh, the city of Lynnwood, that wasn't done back when they first came into the RFA, so it's something we're looking at doing as well. But, uh, it sounds like that axe probably be displayed somewhere within the, uh, city hall somewhere, so. But, uh, outside of that, um, right now, we just, uh, getting ready for our legislative session that's, uh, coming up. Um, I think it's first week of February is when we're heading down there, obviously it kicked off, and so we've got, uh, one of our members, uh, AJ Johnson, who's one of the legislative liaisons in the state council, he's down there right now doing work. And, uh, several bills, um, hitting the floor, I know, uh, one thing, and obviously it's near for all of us, right, is, uh, emergency room wait times for our units, and I know there's a bill getting ready to hit the floor that's related to that, or that they're working on. Shouldn't say it's hitting the floor, but there are working on a bill, um, that hopefully maybe will have an impact there, um, and in addition to that, I know tonight, I serve also on the state council, uh, wildland fire committee. Um, and we had a few bills that are going through related to wildland fire air quality and whatnot in the state of Washington and stuff, so, that we're reviewing, so. Um, outside of that, you know, we've got some members heading down for some educational conferences, but, uh, the big one is, but that shouldn't coming up, and then obviously we'll have one in March, too, where we'll be back in DC as well, meeting with our, uh, state politicians, so. But, uh, outside of that, because I think that's it for, uh, our report tonight, but thank you for having me.
Any questions, commissioners?
Thanks for being here.
Yep. Thanks, that was fun there in Mill Creek, I was surprised you were able to walk in with a full-size axe and, um, chief can stop.
Nobody jumped on me, yeah, right?
Next. Um, also with that, uh, EMS, like, or legislation component that you mentioned, can you email me? Or have AJ email me the, um, the bill information?
Once, yeah, once it's, uh, ready to go, yeah, we can do that.
Even just the, the starting of it, so, peak interest to me, because that's something I'm very interested in.
Yeah.
So, I'd like to track that one to make sure that it finishes and doesn't, uh, have to leave the race early.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Yep, no worries.
All right. With that, we will go into executive session, it has two parts. Part A is review the performance of a public employee pursuant to RCW four two dot three zero dot one one zero sub one sub G is George, second part B. Potential litigation pursuant to RCW four two dot three zero dot one one zero. Sub one sub I is in Eastridge, and we'll start off with, uh, thirty minutes. Uh. Oh. Uh, possible potential action to follow.
The executive session has been extended by fifteen minutes. The executive session has been extended by fifteen minutes. The executive session has been extended by fifteen minutes.
All right, we are resumed to go into, uh, unfinished business, we'll start off with committee appointments. As I understand it, we need, uh, bylaws, finance, intergovernmental, is that, uh, everything, chief?
That is correct. It was on the, the snow, I have a wine and, uh, right, yeah. That is correct.
Okay, um, so the process to our bylaws, I, as I understand it, we, uh, the chair needs to request for these committees from the quorum and then to appoint. So. I move that we create, uh, bylaws committee and finance committee and intergovernmental each to be ad hoc for the calendar year of two thousand twenty three.
I make so I.
Uh, Commissioner Lawrence, seconds, is there any discussion? Thank you, Commissioner Lawrence. Now, appear, go ahead and vote, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those both say nay. All right. Well, T O flag, you have a comment? Question?
It's a, it's a nay, I'm, like I've mentioned in the past, I'm against committees, because it gives too much, uh, power to committee members, but that's a nay.
Thank you. Um. Power. All right, uh, the eyes have it, so we'll go out with the, uh, bylaws committee, we'll continue with, uh, Commissioner, uh, Roland and Commissioner Kenny, um.
So we have a, uh, meeting scheduled until the twenty third of January. We're going to bylaws and, uh.
Oh, I got committee updates here, don't be bothered. Thank you, uh, finance, I appoint the commissioner, uh, Chan. And then for intergovernmental, we'll go ahead and continue with, uh, commissioners. Roland and Farinahoff, and I'll go ahead and appoint myself to that, and then I'll continue, I'll appoint for the stone nine one one representative, I'll continue, uh, myself. So, there are our committee appointments, uh, budget workshop date for discussion. Need you guys to look at, uh, September, Friday, September eighth and Friday, September twenty second. If might be able to take that time off of work, I will plan to take one of those two days off to do an all-day discussion. Uh, when we were doing it this last year, I felt it was very painful to stay till eleven o'clock at night for multiple meetings, and so the best way to avoid that is a one-day budget workshop. Um, does anybody have their calendar available, get an idea whether or not that's a go or no-go, which day works better? Friday, September eighth and Friday, September twenty second. So, or. Again, uh, we'll, I'll readdress that the next meeting. Um. Legislative priority updates. So, we, uh, had a discussion, um, with, uh, myself and, uh, executive assistant Melissa and, uh, AC Maxwell, um, to, uh, figure out some things, just to try and create some alignment uh, between the firefighters' union, the chief seat, uh, group, as well as the commissioners group. Um, so, reiterating on that, but the, my top priority is what, uh, President Moore commented about with, uh, the wall wait time and whatnot in the hospitals, and so looking to, uh, have some conversations with the Washington State Hospitals Association to get some alignment there and figure out what the, uh, best alternative solution to what we're dealing with is today. So that's why I'm curious to know, uh, how you guys doing moving forward with that. Um, there are other topics as well, but for me, that's a primary one. And. And on to amended and restated RFA plans with, uh, Deputy Chief Eastman.
Can you go back to the, you, you're assigning the, so on the, so you, we not have a, a spring workshop or May, where you should work out?
Right.
Okay, we won't have, okay. Legislation, can we have a segment that we can discuss about what other legislation we, I know you get input from the. Providence, so we never have a discussion among our commissioners, what other issue we want to, we want to talk about, in the past, we have one commissioner, kind of a, comes in strong, kind of like, follow that on, on, on that type of, uh, with, with the help of, uh, of Melissa, so I would like to have the opportunity on the next agenda that talk about from the commissioner point of what, what we see as other legislative issue that we want to, we want, we want to discuss.
Okay.
All right, that will be good, so, and now, on the committee, we're just going so fast, so I'm not on the, in the, in the government anymore, is that what, what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, so, all right, so, is there a good reason that I was on that?
Uh, thought it was a good, uh, time to go ahead and, um, restructure that one.
So now only committee I have is on finance committee only?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Deputy Chief Eastman, you have the floor.
Um, good evening, um. So, I think I'll start with a brief explanation of why you have a restated and amended IFA for the city of Briar, or, or, or plan amendment for the city of Briar. Um, and it has to do with, um, now that we are having conversations, city of Molley Terrace, and there is a strong desire for them to move towards um, potentially an annex ballot measure in April along with the city of Briar. Um, uh, in con, in consultation with Rich, um, we need to put a note in the plan amendment for Briar and Molley Terrace, and we'll talk about that in a moment, um, to acknowledge that both are moving forward on the ballot. The rationale behind that is there's the ability for people to can contest maybe the wrong word. Um, and what we did want to do is have a ballot measure go forward with Briar and not acknowledge the fact that Molley Terrace is going also, which also changes the RFA plan. So, the goal is, is in the, in the RFA plan amendment for Briar, what we've added is a couple administrative corrections that you saw. And then there's a note that just says Molley Terrace is also going to ballot or considering going to ballot. And it states that the board shall, if both are adopted, shall merge both amended plans to create a new plan once the vote's taken between the two respected cities. Um, and so, I know that in October of last year, the board already adopted the amended plan for Briar. In the packet, you saw a clean version of the plan. Then you saw the original track changes from when Mill Creek entered, and the rationale behind that is, is because Briar City have not, has not adopted the RFA plan that we adopted yet, Rich worked off the standing plan. And then there's also for Briar a comparison, so knowing what you adopted in October, the, the minor changes that were made to accommodate Molley Terrace also going to ballot was there, so you only had to look at what we had to edit and amend to accommodate Molley Terrace coming, Molley Terrace also considering going to ballot. So, um, now if you're not thoroughly confused, um, and so it was a, it was a, they were really minor, and, and Rich took the opportunity to correct a couple of things that have changed from now and then um, that were, um, I would say administrative, um, but that's the big change, and so we're at a place where with the city of Briar's amended RFA plan, if the board is, um, okay with what, what we added as a result of what I just explained, um, the board or the staff, you know, put in there that the board could take potential action tonight, um, to, um, clean up that plan, and then there's a potential that the city of Briar is approving the pre-annexation agreement tonight, along with the RFA plan that we amended in October. I've already talked to the mayor and said you may have to adopt the one we amend tonight at your next meeting as a result of, and I explained to him the same thing, so with that, I'll stop and take any questions from the board, um, if I confused you.
So far, so good.
Okay, so, before we move to Molley Terrace, um, Chair, I don't know if the board's considering, um, approving the adopted plan and the resolution was attached, um, tonight or not, no, I'll defer to you on that.
Board feel confident in approving the, uh, the amendment tonight and to help keep moving things forward?
Just one minor amendment, uh, question, I know that we've, uh, kind of done a, a change in organizational structure, and I know that was one of the, uh, the last pages on this thing was the old organizational structure, is that something that we would want to amend as part of this? Now later, is it necessary?
So. Went down the path that we would amend it as it currently sits, and we can address that later.
Okay. We'll have an opportunity to have our annual report with Briar and Mount Lake Terrace soon, and it'll accelerate the pace, aren't we, we do that towards the latter end of the winter, early, uh, spring. Actually, uh, the city of Edmond says that, because of our threshold verification or medial measures uh, to pause on us giving them an annual report until April, then get the, the commission and the council together in May. So we'll have some good opportunities, any organizational chart changes, we'll be able to express those to both cities in our annual report.
I'm curious, uh, with the, the ballot being on Tuesday, April twenty fifth, um, and project management, they have what you refer to as a workback schedule, so I'm curious what the deadline is to have things submitted to the county assassin or auditor's office for it to appear on the ballot.
I believe it's the twenty fourth of February.
February twenty fourth, okay, so that's what, uh, we're trying to race towards and then accelerate a rate?
The goal is to get that so they can have with Briar, we're, we'll have to go back and fix, they'll have to go back if, if the board approves this tonight, they'll have to reapprove the amended plan, um, to move it forward, but Briar's on track, when we talk about Molley Terrace in a minute, that's a little bit more expedited because they're a little bit behind, so we'll talk about it.
Okay. I encourage us to go ahead and pass this tonight, so that way we're not the roadblock, uh, with that being said, the chair would like to entertain a motion to, um.
Melissa? Is it resolution one zero one zero two zero two three dash zero one?
Yeah.
That.
They. Chair would like to entertain a motion to approve resolution zero one one zero two zero two three dash zero one to, uh, approve the amended RFA plan for the city of Briar, draft a minute, restated RFA plan.
So moved.
Where is that resolution's text?
I was just right, right here.
No, I know, that's the, the related items, I was wondering, was that in our packet, so we have the actual text of it, or is there a?
I'm just assuming that we're gonna vote on something we see it. I assume it was in there. Okay, uh, I'm looking at, I'm looking at Melissa.
I don't.
I just don't, I don't see the.
Do you know what page it was?
One oh nine.
Yeah, one one hundred, red lining in there.
So there's one oh three, which.
It's page, yeah, page one oh three, my apologies.
One, one other.
Line zero three.
This is a workshop, right, it's not a special meeting?
No, it's a special meeting tonight.
Yes.
That's why I made the committee appointments.
Okay, I'm really confused because we have, we have no meal and then workshop. Oh. Because it is still a red lining in there, right, you're, you're, it's still a draft, it says.
Nope, you have a, the first, the first document's a clean document, the redline versions are just for your reference to know where we were, and then you have, uh, for Briar, there's a comprehensive one that just shows the edits from the plan you adopted in October.
Right, original plan, you, you, you were not asking to be passed today, right?
It's the, it's the restated amended plan, um, and the clean copies, the first, it starts on page nine of the packet.
So that's what you want us to vote on?
And that, and that revised plan is, is, uh, is what the resolution was optioned.
This is the first time we see revised plan.
The, with the minor edits we just made, yes.
Yeah. So this is the first time I ever see this.
Second. Say that's our.
So we've seen one of these, but then there were minor edits, so there's three copies here.
Yeah, so, the three copies for Briar. This is, this was, so you have a clean version, which is all, right, that's.
Page nine through.
That has all the edits accepted and where, and that's the, that's the plan, amended plan. Then you have the original edits that Rich made to amend the plan in October.
And we saw those in October.
And you saw those in October.
Okay.
And, and so you see them again, and then there's another redline version, which is a comparison between what you adopted in October and the, and the small edits that Rich had to make as a result of Molley Terrace also going to ballot, and the reason I put that in is because really those are the changes, you're agreed that, that changed what you already approved in October, but to be transparent with everybody of where we're going, we added all and risk confusing people, um, to get to where we're going.
Some feedback. Just some cover sheets in between each of them with an explanation of what we're looking at, could probably help in the future. Seen pages thirty nine through, what is it, uh, seventy uh, in the past, and so the only real differences are in the last copy, in whatever's in the columns.
Yep, and, and, and the, the, the biggest chain which.
Something on page eighty five.
It's the, yeah, and it's, it's really the note section. If you go to, uh, I find.
So we removed the stuff that was relating to Mill Creek.
Yeah, and if you go to, if you go to page ninety two. And you go to the bottom and that, that note that's in the bottom, that's where we address that Molley Terrace is coming, that's the real big change. Um, the other stuff was edit cleanups from Rich.
It's.
Um. The change that identifies the fact that Molley Terrace may be going also. So it's clear to Briar residents that Molley Terrace is considering that.
Give me a second.
Uh, so, Commissioner Lawrence, you made the motion, right? You're a stammer, okay, I just want to make sure I heard correctly, and yes, I'm in the second, second, thank you, Commissioner Farinahoff. Moved and seconded, any further discussion?
Uh, I, just for discussion, I, to me, too confusing. I, I have saved from, from voting on this. It really is. Just, if you look at the video on here, it was a meeting. So much confusion and you go on something, I don't think you look, image. Optimize is not really good.
Thank you. Chief, Commissioner Chan, I, I hear what you're saying, the staff will try to do better in the future, if we were talking about, uh, item ten B. Molley Terrace first, it might give some, some more, uh, frame up of why it's so important to get these items done. Molley Terrace having a work on steel, Chief Eastman Center, but with Molley Terrace having work-study session on the twelfth of this week, and then having a regular business meeting on the seventeenth, and this rapid progression as city of Molley Terrace also, uh, considers adding themselves to the special election ballot in April. Uh, you know, we're just trying to be as transparent as we can, to your point about the red lines of previous documents, but also support these contract cities that have been with Fire District one since two thousand one. Fire District one formally on a twenty-year agreement since two thousand five. Now that we're getting into these last two years of the initial twenty-year term of the agreement, we're just pleased to be able to bring this in front of you. But these, uh, as the question was asked, what are the filing deadlines? The more that we can do to support our contract cities, their constituents, stakeholders, the better off we'll be, so.
So when, I thought, with next week, we, we heard the whole thing? What's that, next week, what, what happened, we voted next week?
Well. Thoughts? It, 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 it just, um, it just adds another week to to the other pieces where public hearings and education and some of the other pieces that the city of Briar is working on to move things through. Um. At the end, so.
With, with the chair, David's done it. Keep it.
I'd like, Lincoln, just make a quick motion, since you said that, uh, ten, discussing ten B might help clarify some of this. Um, I just, I, I would move for unanimous consent for us to just table the, the current motion that's on the floor, take up ten B, and then we can bring back the, uh, the, the current motion afterwards, so we've got the, the context, um, instead of trying to model.
Staff can certainly support that.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, if you have a second for that.
Ask your announcement. Uh, as long as there's no objections.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that. Thank you. So now now we'll talk about Mount Lake Terrace. Um, so um, staff has had a couple of meetings with the city of Mount Lake Terrace um and and currently there there's a desire um to move forward with an annexation um into the RFA as early as April of this year. Um, and as we talked about earlier, you they have to have everything to the county by the twenty fourth of February. If you roll that all backwards, um, it's um, it's they're they're a little bit behind where Malt Lake or Mill Creek was when we were working with Mill Creek. Um, and so um, we talked about this briefly and I can't remember if it was a staff conversation or um, if we actually discussed this with the board that we were going to move forward with anticipating of getting the documentation started and in a place so we weren't, if the city of Mount Lake Terrace wanted to go in April, we were going to be in a position to be able to support that effort on behalf of the city and not be the the thing that slowed things down. So, sorry. So as a result of that, um, we have um amended the RFA plan to allow the city of Mount Lake Terrace to annex into RFA. Now, we have not received a request resolution from the city of Briar to annex in. Um, I anticipate that be or sorry, Mount Lake Terrace. I anticipate that being um brought before the council Thursday night. Um, and we expect that the the resolution request annexation to be passed Thursday night and we should receive it Friday morning. And so in anticipation for that, here is the first look at um an amended plan with the city of Mount Lake Terrace. And so the first copy, which is page one oh seven. And it goes through page one forty one is a clean version of an amended plan with the city of Mount Lake Terrace. It looks very similar to the Briar one. Um, the difference is is um, um, the city of Briar has a or city of Malika says a fire station that that it's addressed. If you look at from one forty two. Page one forty two. Where it ends, sorry. Um, through one seventy one is a redline version. The redline version is the RFA plan prior to the one you voted on in October. Once again, for the same reasons we talked about is that because the city of Briar had not adopted our RFA plan yet, that's the plan Rich worked from. So the edits you see are edits that you've seen. This will be now the third time we've seen them. And um, and then we added, of course, the footnote that lets the Briar or multi terrorist folks know that the city of Briar is going to be on the ballot. And it says that the board shall, both of these are approved, what can will consolidate the plans and create and and merge those two to create, you know, and and have an RFA RFA plan that brings those together. Now, we're not ready for action on the RF, the multi terrorist one. We're still having conversations with them and staff with regards to when the RFA forms and some of those other pieces, but um, we wanted to bring this before you so you could see it. Um, and like I said, it's not much different than what you read in the Briar amended plan. Um, and it's really not a whole lot different than what you've seen in the previous plans. It's just been updated with new players. So um, I wanted you to see that and right now I'll pause if there's any questions specifically to Mount Lake Terrace. I will also let you know that we're working on a pre annexation agreement also. Um, the the template we're launching from is the is the template that you we um, approved last meeting for the city of Briar is the template we're launching from. Um, realizing there's a handful of changes with the city of Malika Terrace. They have left liability. Um, they have a fire station. Um, and so there's a little bit of change. Um, and the way we're going is you will see when we bring that forward, you will see the Briar's pre annexation agreement and restated amended interlocal agreement. Um, you will see the edits made in that document. Um, when we bring this forward for the pre annexation with the city of Mount Lake Terrace and those are in the works. Um, I hope um after our meeting tomorrow with the city of Mount Lake Terrace um, that we can put a draft of that document in for discussion for you guys the next meeting. At least to give you a first shot at what we're talking about and then be able to um have a conversation with you guys about maybe where um a sticky point is. I see station nineteen being the big challenge in the city of all like terrorists. The result is is they got servers that are in the basement and they park all their law enforcement underneath the station. So it's it's not that the of the transfer of the station, I think they realize that's that's what we want and that's what we historically have done with everybody who's formerly joined the RFA. Um, but they have some infrastructure that the city uses that need to be addressed. Chief, myself, Leslie, um, have have assured them that the intent is not to just grab it and force everybody to vacate. What we can work through that that um, those nuances of station nineteen, just like we did with with station fifteen as a fiber came into that station. And the pieces, we just need to make sure we draft the right subsequent documents that address that issue. Um, and if there's any other issues, I don't know of anything based on our current conversation, chief, to you. Um, I think nineteen is just the one, station nineteen and um, I think it'll be easily addressed. It's just a little bit more complex than Briar, so.
Well, I just want to make sure I understand kind of all these documents. Um, clean copy of uh, I'm I'm gonna start with page nine. Clean copy of annexation with uh uh Briar's uh meant the amendments required for Briar to come in in there. Thirty nine is what we already saw preparatory in October. And then page seventy one is those additions to allow Briar into what we were already doing because Mill Creek already came in. There you go. Okay, so Mill Creek comes in, we gotta get rid of the the intent to bring in Mill Creek. Briar, we know is coming in, we're adding in the language for the intent for Briar to come in.
So I want to make sure, so in the in the page, what's the last round, seventy five?
Yeah.
It 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 acknowledges that Mount Lake Terrace is also going to go ballot at the same time.
Gotcha.
Not Mill Creek, it's Mount Lake Terrace going to ballot at the same time.
I understand that.
Right, is is the big change.
That's one forty three is the Mount Lake Terrace one.
Right, but in in seventy five.
Trying to figure out the evolution of these. So what we originally had got amended on it or got proposed amendments that we saw in October. Tonight you give us minor amendments and you're asking us just do the minor amendments plus what we already saw in October as action tonight.
Yep.
What version does this red line one on, I guess, I guess it starts on one oh eight? Where does it sprout from? Is it a delta between seventy one in this, thirty nine in this, or nine and and this?
So one oh eight.
Looks like there's a lot of a lot of edits to it and I'm just trying to.
So one oh eight.
Yeah, I mean, let me make one away.
Is.
Or one oh nine.
So this is. I want to make sure I do this right so I don't make it more confusing. This is very similar. It's based on the amended RFA that you voted on October, so it's based on the middle.
We saw in October, we didn't vote on it in our.
You, well, it's what you, it it's based on the Briar's amendments that incorporate Mount Lake Terrace. So um, and this is, so this, these.
The red lines on this is the delta between this and thirty nine.
So, so.
I I know it's.
No, right, so one oh seven is based on the RFA plan prior to what you voted on on October. And updated to include, to make it so multi terrace could annex in.
So it doesn't include the minor change from this.
Seventy one. This does now. So this incorporates those minus changes also.
Got it.
Right, but because you've not seen anything from Mount Lake Terrace before, we gave you all those changes in this in the redline version and the clean version encompasses all of that. It encompasses both the redline versions in Briar and makes it specific to Mount Lake Terrace. Is that, I I think that's a great way to put it, Bob. I I want to make sure I'm not confusing.
If you could look at page one oh seven of your packet with the agenda bill itself. The bold summary summarizes exactly what Chief Eastman has said with his narrative. And in the discussion portion on the same page, if you go down to paragraph three, that starts with staff has also drafted and amended. That captures those two things. So the bold on the agenda bill plus paragraph three on the same page on.
Yeah, yeah. So so in the future with these, because I anticipate we'll do it again, I will I will add a cover sheet. I I, that's a really good idea, Commissioner Roland, and and I will do that different moving forward. And and I'll do it because you're going to see the amended plan from all like terrorists and I will, I will do that um as we go. Cause because that's a lot of stuff and in in the in the goal of trying to be transparent, we didn't want to confuse anybody. But at the same time, specifically with Briar is the fact that you already took action at one time and we're asking you to amend the action you already took. We felt, we felt the need to make sure you understood the whole whole reason why that happened because at the time we didn't think, we really didn't think multi terrace was going to play until the end of the year. So.
So is there only one version of this that's applicable and in power at any one time? So if we approve the one for Briar and then we were to change and approve this one, let's say next month or next week or whatever. This one removes Briar or I'm sorry. Now I'm getting confused. We were to approve the one tonight that you're asking for approval on that has the additional language for Mount Lake Terrace. We're still waiting for Mount Lake Terrace to come in. If we approve this version, it takes my terrace out and puts word Briar in there. Don't we need both of them simultaneously in a document?
So so that's what, so that's ultimately what's going to happen.
God.
So ultimately what's going to happen is is you approved. If you tonight approve the restated amended RFA plan that allows Briar in, that's that's a document. At some point in the very near future, the hope is is that we adopt and approve the RFA restated plan to allow multi terrace to annex in. The footnotes in those were, so we didn't have to have a third one. Right, to to cover all the things depending what happened at the ballot. So what we did is put the footnote that if they both pass, thou shall or merge those to become the new plan. If one passes and the other doesn't, Briar becomes the plan. If Mount Lake Parish passes and Briar doesn't, Mount Lake Terrace becomes the plan. If they fall class, then we will merge them together as a result, and that's what we said in the plans. Does that, does that help?
Yeah, I guess my confusion was the removal of Mount Lake Terrace over here. When we had just added it back in here and the fact they're going simultaneously. So this technically should have two footnotes or a footnote that says both of them are doing it.
So so the Briar footnote says Mount Lake Terrace is going to ballot. The Mount Lake Terrace footnote will say Briar is going to ballot. So and really it's just informing the multi terrace residents that the city of Briar is going to vote at the same time.
But as soon as we pass the one that removes language from Mount Lake Terrace, this one becomes active and this one goes away as a prior version.
No, they, no, sorry.
Okay.
They they both run parallel until the votes.
Got it.
If both pass, then the it says that that the board shall merge the two documents to create the new plan. If one or the other pass or don't pass, then one wins, one loses.
Gotcha. Technically, we'll have two RFA plans in effect. The only delta between them is a footnote.
And really they become effective at the time. If you read, if you read the plans, plans become effective once the voters approve the annexation.
Okay, so I think I think some of the the biggest confusion I had personally when I was looking through is had to do with this one having all the red lines of this plus kind of this, but then minus. So it was, it just wasn't clear the evolution there. So um, thank you.
Did 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 we, are we? Because it it is and we, and like I said, when Mount Lake Terrace said they wanted to go and put us into high gear and period would have been very easy to bring Briar and then later bring Mount Lake Terrace. We just don't have the luxury of that time. So I apologize for any of the confusion um from a staff perspective. That wasn't our intent.
So as to voting on it tonight, what we should be kind of focused on, if I understand this, is that we've already seen the vast majority of the changes, just kind of ignore, let's ignore the the.
Yep.
Uh, Briar one. The Mount Lake Terrace, well, we've seen the majority of the changes and beyond that, the only real changes here are just on the last like pages, I guess seventeen, but one is. Well, there's a footnote and there's a couple of other little minor things.
Yes, minor.
They look like they may just be things that got missed back over here.
That's what they are. They're just administrative or there were scrutiny.
Administrative cleanup.
You're got it. Um.
Thank you. Are you good?
Oh, I just want to say outstanding work. I mean, that's a lot of details to go through. That's a, that doesn't happen in an afternoon. Okay, and and I get it. It's a time-based approach for document development. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm satisfied that and have the trust in staff that you're doing the exact thing that you need to be doing. And we understand that there's a time sensitivity to this, so um, I've I'm I'm all in favor you know, moving this forward, so.
Okay.
Commissioner, uh, kidding, because you haven't been chatting this.
Chief Eastman, station nineteen, uh, is that fully paid out by the city?
Yes, I believe it is, yes.
I can answer the question. Yeah, two point one six million dollars in two thousand eight it opened. It was paid for out of general public. They did not fall on that station.
Opened in Bud.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Chan.
Yeah, that is a good demonstration. I have this called book. What I'd like to see, at least for me, I think it's for you. First of all, it's crazy, one hundred and seventy seven pages without what is important and not is important, right? So I would like to combine, okay, the final version, what a what a section is called main report, only the one final finish of the thing in here. And then the red line, whatever it is, is called attachment. So people who is interested in it go into attachment. So we don't have to go back and forth and stuff like that. So that will eliminate a lot of, a lot of confusion. What is, what's the main body? So it I write, this is the example I did in November seventeen, twenty twenty. Basically, only twenty six pages what we need on your boat. So I know exactly what I'm voting on, not that, I think that would help you too. So on the, everything on the red line, I think maybe you get a one page summary explaining the whole thing. To me, I'm much more comfortable in that way, so it.
Another suggestion if you want.
Let me just finish it. So I can pass it on to you and I pass it on to the commissioner and see that this is a combination of, I I I I attend a lot of board meeting and that's how I I I board do it. They don't, they don't, they don't run one hundred and seventy seven pages without ordering, without any kind of references and everything else. And this is still the idea from snow nine one one before COVID, well. COVID's probably even had that, or you may not be. They actually give you a binder and basically the main thing is in there. And then it, and then I kind of created attachment. So I hope you I can take a look at that and I can explain to you.
Oh, I I'm I'm good.
I'm. You don't even have to say the David Chan's idea, just.
No, I'm I'm good with giving you less and doing things differently that we just want, from my perspective, we've had it, we've gone, we've gone round and round. So if staff, if if the board would choose and and part of it was, we put the clean version first. We we need to do some things differently from how we bring that forward.
Right.
Um, and so uh, we'll work with the chair, that's okay, to ensure we're putting the appropriate things in the packet and the appropriate things in supporting documentation. So as we move forward with this, because I I I get it um, and and we want to give you enough, but we don't want to give you too much um, at the same time. And I and I'm glad we're having the conversation where we want just a little bit less. Um, at the same time, and I, and I'm glad we're having the conversation where we want just a little bit less. Than it'd be on the other side where, well, you didn't give me enough, is, is where I'm, so I'm all for making things easier and making things better and giving. The board. What they need to make informed decisions.
Right.
We just need to work through this and make sure, give us a couple times, um, and, and it won't take us very long to, to do that component.
But the report is not just for the chair, for the commissioners.
I agree.
I, I hope you can take. Take some suggestions from Commissioner.
Yeah.
Okay, and then. And then one, one of my, one of my thing, I thinking is that. We wait, I know the situation, time consume, time because we. One tells everything here. I really like to see each meeting, only three major. Major issue we need to solve. I don't know why we're so confused, so many pages. At the end of the day, we're all confused, we cannot vote, or we just vote without knowing what the details are. Uh, some of us like detail, some of us don't. So if you don't like detail, fine, one-page summary, tell us what it is. And then we just go vote for that, because. Uh, I don't know how many times, a hundred eighty, hundred ninety, two hundred pages. I don't think I can, this is not my full-time job. It's very difficult to get it prepared. I mean, so after the meeting, I would like to pass it on to you. I can explain to you and. Other commissioners, they like the idea. Uh, I think that's, that would be help, help us a lot. Thank you.
Scotty, Commissioner. All right, so we'll go back to the Breyer component. And so go to the vote on that one.
No.
Right, right, because we're voting on Breyer, Mount Terrace as an FYI. All right, so let me. Yeah, all right. So, it's a resolution. Yes, back to item ten A, which was the original resolution that I had announced. Which. Resolution number zero one one zero two zero two three dash zero one. Amendment of South Stonewash County Fire and Rescue Regional Fire Authority Plan for Breyer. All those in favor of it, say aye. Aye, aye, all those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? All right. Motion carries. Um, Mount Terrace, that was discussion, we had that, so we are on to new business. CFO Botwell, you have four to tell us about the comprehensive financial plan management policies.
All right, we need commissioners. This will be a quick item. Do you have a presentation for you though? So I'm going to start with just a little bit of background. Um, this first slide just has a description of what financial policies are. So they're the rules that govern the financial management of the organization. And the reason I put this up is just to distinguish those from the procedures and processes that we implement to. Uh, that we utilize, excuse me, to, to implement the policies. So what we're going to be focused on in this discussion and this project is the rules, not the implementation. So there's a number of benefits of having policies. I chose to highlight just three on this slide. The first one is increased transparency. Um, the policies are discussed publicly. Uh, and they're adopted by the board publicly. Uh, and so there's, that adds to transparency. Um, the new policies that we're going to be talking about, the format will be easier to attach to other documents too, so they'll be out in the community more often than. The current documents, um, and, and I can see those being attached to things like budget documents. Um, and audit reports and those kinds of things. Uh, the other benefit I want to highlight is just increased accountability. Uh, policies often assign roles and responsibilities. Um, but they also create kind of organization-wide accountability, uh, by telling the public exactly what it is we're doing. And they provide a framework for decision-making. So our current policies are a mix of District One policies that carried over, uh, and some RFA policies that have been created since RFA was formed. The one thing that they have in common is that they're all, uh, they're, they're all dealing with narrowly defined subjects. So an example is that we have a policy that deals with the timing of the budget calendar. Uh, and that's not dissimilar to the other policies that we currently have. The opportunity that we have is to create a comprehensive financial management policies, so a set of policies that really touches on more topics. Uh, and is comprehensive and it kind of everything we do in a financial, uh, in the financial world. Um, and specifically what we want to do is create a set of policies that are aligned with best practices and responsive to the current needs and complexity of the organization. So we've broken this up into three steps. Uh, the first one is to fill in the blanks. And what we want to do is reconcile our current policies with best practice policy frameworks. Uh, and find the relevant gaps. So, and the policy frameworks for best, excuse me, best practices that we'd be looking to would come from the. Municipal Research Service Center, which is a Washington organization, and also the Government Finance Officers Association. The second step would be to identify desirable updates. Uh, and we might want to make updates. Possible reasons would be changes in conditions or standards, or there might be a business case to make a change or an update. And then the third step would be consideration of adoptions. We would bring, uh, the draft policies back to the board for consideration of adoption. Uh, and then we, following adoption, we would, uh, move to implement policies. So the timeline for all of this, ideally, we would complete this before budget development, uh, the twenty twenty four budget, so June-ish. Um, just kind of penciling out what, what work we would need to accomplish. I think it's probably four meetings that would be required. Um, found, there's kind of three options for venue for where this work could occur. Um, work sessions like today would be acceptable. Um, we now have a finance, an ad hoc finance committee, and so, um, that's a recent development, but that would be kind of staff's recommendation. Uh, but it could also occur at regular meetings as well. So for next steps, uh, we just need to choose the venue and staff is ready to begin scheduling. So. Um, if you're ready, we would be happy to take direction tonight on what venue you'd like to have this work occur in. Uh, if you're not, we can bring it back for further discussions. That's the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Um, you identified best practices. Where do we find those best practices? From what industries do they stem?
So the two guides that we'll be using are the, the municipal research service center, MRSC. It's a Washington organization that deals specifically with local governments. Um, and so they have a website. They're a big organization that does a lot of things. Financial policy is just one of them. So they have a financial policies toolkit. And a best practice framework. The other one is Government Finance Officers Association, which is a national organization. There's a local chapter. They have a website. They have a toolkit too. Um, and there's, they have some resource guides and, and some webinars and stuff like that that we can. Uh, check in on what the current activity is, but they have framework for, uh, best practices as well as financial policies.
Outstanding, thank you. Sounds like we're prepared.
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kenny.
Mr. Botwell, the first organization you mentioned, can you say that name again?
Yeah, it's MRSC, yes, well. Sorry, I just didn't. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Then, uh, sorry, the last slide up there, you choosing a venue, is that just determining whether the finance committee should kind of take this on? Preliminary early to get through the grunt, some of the grunt work and then we get something with consensus.
Yeah, that's sort of the question. If, if you prefer to see it in work session or in regularly scheduled, scheduled meetings, then we would just go through the normal channels to get those scheduled. So that's kind of the question for us.
What would that process look like if it was delegated to the committee? Would. Staff draw up all of the, you know, policies, you know, with best practices. Review it with the committee, get any feedback, and then. With whatever that feedback is, come to the board with a. You know, this is what we recommend. We integrated this feedback, this feedback, we want your opinion on kind of that kind of process.
I think what you described is right on.
Then, then I'm for that.
Yeah, with the caveat that most likely based on the chair, vice chair's recommendation of the consensus, the finance subcommittee, we bring that back to work, study session first as well. Have another look for everything. I'm recommending action.
And then my, my last question is, would any of the current District One policies then kind of be? Um, I guess, uh, merged or somehow in with some of these newer ones? Would there be basically kind of a revamp of all the rest of the policies all at the same time to get that official, here's the best practice for the. The policies we need, here's the stuff that fits in there with. What we already have, and then these, the outliers that are going to remain.
Yeah, well, to some extent. So what I envision is that we have, we, we go to the best practice framework and identified the policies we should have. A lot of those policies, some of those policies will be existing policies from District One or the RFA. So we'll populate those in there. Then we'll look for the gaps and we'll start to populate those by, based on good informal policies that are currently in practice that aren't, you know, written down or adopted. Uh, or current practices, we'll put it back into the policy area. Then the second step will be to consider changes. So we'll create a document that's basically more robust than we currently have, and then we'll go in and say, you know, is the reserve policy at sixty days or seventeen percent still appropriate? Or do we want to increase that to, to ninety percent?
Got it.
Just as an example.
So structural, uh, reorganization first and then actual content reorganization second. Well said. Would those be two separate, like. Uh, votes and considerations, like we're going to go through and just get everything into the right framework and then more work gets done on the content? Or would it be all done at once and then we just have one vote on the final product?
Just a vote on the final product.
Okay. Comments? All right. Thank you CFO Botwell. Onto eleven B, purchase of two Pierce enforcer camper trucks.
It's, I took this one for Shane tonight. So this item, so, so for some of our newer folks, um. When we're making purchases of certain value, it's a contracting purchase. We need to bring that to the board for awareness. Uh, the purchase of these two bumper trucks that we're talking about tonight are both in the budget. Uh, they're on the replacement schedule. So this is a routine replacement, but because of the dollar value, um, we're bringing it to you tonight. So. Um, if there's any discussion that you'd like to have, you know, we're, we're here to entertain that. Uh, we can also bring it back a second time, but our intention is just to. Uh, create awareness of this and bring it back for consent next week.
One question, what is that threshold? My only question.
Um, it's seventy five thousand dollars.
Anything above seventy five requires board approval?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner, fair enough.
No, the, this item actually just prompted a curiosity question, and since there was an inventory of equipment here at the, uh. Uh, for the RFA, I, I was curious to find out what our oldest piece of equipment was, and I got down to ninety eight, ninety two, nineteen ninety. And then I was floored when I saw nineteen twenty five. So then I realized that was our classy pumper, so. Man, we're really stretching it out here, aren't we? So, thank you.
Amazing prepared on maintenance.
Yes, oh, and smokes.
We need to buy a couple more hundred-year, uh, hundred-year apparatus.
Yeah.
Right. Um. I'm good with that. Anybody ask any questions? Um, all right, oh, just one question on that. So we had budgeted out for this, we can add it planned with all the inflation and all the changes there. Was there a significant increase in, in what we were anticipating to spend on these and how much was that?
Yeah, the current bid is about ten percent higher than we, what we had budgeted, so, um, we will, we're going to attempt to identify savings elsewhere in the capital fund budget. On that, uh, it is possible. Uh, there's a note in the agenda bill that if, if we can't identify those savings, there's a chance we will come back to you for a budget amendment before year ends.
So ten percent is a total of what, uh, it's a one, what's, so, so a hundred and seventy thousand?
I think about approximately, yeah.
These pumper actually, um. We put a committee together to look at the last spec that we had. And these were greatly simplified, and so we actually had quite a bit of cost savings, because there was less specialized stuff. Being put on these apparatus by Pierce, you know, in our spec. Um, so these are more of a standard. Style apparatus with less add-ons and upcharges to them. So we actually, um, even with the. Significant price increases, we're at or below where we were for the last one that we got. So we, we realized quite a bit of savings. Um, and then there is a price increase by Pierce minutes in the document as well of one point seven five percent. Um, that was a double-digit issue when we were pushing to try to get these purchased before February first, so. Um, and I'll remind you that we do have, uh, in the budget, another TDA to replace Christine. Um, and we're working diligently to get that, uh, to you as well, um, for your review.
Christine is ladder fourteen, right?
I believe currently if it's, if it's there and I'm the shelf right.
Yeah, well, that was my.
I knew where you were going.
All right, uh, thank you. And then. As I understand it as well, that initially, uh, a year ago turnaround time for these acquisitions was how many months?
It, it was at about two years or just.
So right around twenty-four months. And today, what are we looking at?
I, I heard Monday were, they're at about thirty pounds. They've increased. Unfortunately, they, the, the last time I spoke to them, uh, three, four months ago, they thought they were plateauing. Uh, with supply chain issues and stuff, and that they were hoping to start to get them to decrease and, uh. That, so there's still.
So it's another example where we need to act fast.
Yeah, yeah. What you help, yeah, that's what I mean. You know, some of those rings that you saw with, with. Uh, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years on them are, are still on the straight. And I'll remind you, we do have two more reverb. We have not received the first one back. We should. Uh, uh, like, be seeing that in a few months hopefully. Um, and then we've got two of those in the budget as well to send down once we get that back. Um, which that, when you get that one back, it will be going to Station Seventy Six, and the hope is when, eh, with approval. Um, you know, nearly three years from now, there will be a brand new apparatus. That's our, our current line, knowing what we know of our fleet. Right now.
Thank you. Would this require a second resolution for the approval or is that, uh, just?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't have that yet, but it's forthcoming, correct, next meeting or something like that?
Yeah, it'll be in the, in the packet. We'll plan to put it at consent unless we hear otherwise.
It needed items, uh, sounds good to me.
Yeah, thank you.
Not really much for negotiation for what we do. All right, thank you. Uh, onto. Uh, committee updates, bylaws. Vice Chair Roland.
Yeah, sorry, I broke the news early, but we have a meeting next, uh, next week, Monday, uh, the twenty-third. And, uh, we will, uh, hopefully get some, uh. See the work done.
No nine-one-one hasn't met this month. We have a finance committee meeting on Thursday and then a regular meeting the following Thursday, so. Commissioner comments? I have a list, but I'll go last.
Chair, as I can say, Stonewall first help committee is out ahead of you, so we meet at nine o'clock tomorrow morning.
Fair enough. Yeah, I just want a, a general comment. Um, you know, we've gone through some rough waters, uh, here lately. And, uh, even though I mentioned it before, I'd like to welcome back Chief Ice, yeah, well, thank you very much for being here and. And, and with all of our executive sessions that we have and we disappeared for an hour and a half and then you guys still have a smile on your face. I think that's really important. Uh, so we appreciate that. We appreciate your patience, uh, with us. Sometimes we, we have to have things repeated. Um, you know, but I, I think overall, we really do have a great working relationship, but I just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Commissioner Shannon, uh, saw your hand up.
Yeah, um. I have my haircut, just wanted to have a big, long speech, but then I. I don't know, and, uh, I just wanted to. Uh, let people know that, look at, look at this room in here. So County Five cannot exist with the people in the room in here, plus all the staff, understaff. And everything else. And I mean, all the supports and labor and everything else in there. But so county here, so county five is not here for us. So county here is for a two hundred and fifty thousand. Residents in our area. I tried to get a group picture with all of them. It's very difficult, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand. So I have took a picture symbolic this people. So every time I'm going to run, from now on, I will put on here. I just let you know. The thing I suggest, whatever it is, not by my own game. This is how I see, how I represent my neighbors. And that's how I do it. I, I know sometime I say I'm kind of a straightforward kind of guy. I say it without. I'm already emotional, but I hope you guys. Apologize for that, but if I say anything, it's not attacking anyone or, or, or anything. I just think that is the best. For, for my people here, for our people here. So I hope every one of us, when you make a decision, think about these people, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. People in there. Yes, I will wait for my, my long speech for next week.
Next, that appreciates comments, it's us and serve the week. That's what you're saying, so we appreciate.
So I assume that when you make, you make some difficult decision, but you're not making, you're thinking about your. Is the people we serve, right?
Definitely, that speaker, everyone in this room and everyone that's watching this or watching the recording, we're really out for the. We, and it's, it's we in the organization that have served.
Yeah, and sometimes it's difficult decisions.
Okay, definitely, thank you.
Any other commissioners' comments?
All right, uh. Leave the, uh, twenty twenty-three priorities list to Executive Assistant Melissa by Friday, January twentieth. So I know that Commissioner Chan submitted some stuff, so the rest of us, so that in February, we can have a conversation around that. Um, I sent the email just a short while ago about the budget workshop. Uh, I need the commissioners to decide. Either Friday, September eighth, or Friday, September twenty-second, which one will work?
Either Friday, September eighth, or Friday, September twenty-second, which one will work, um, so that everybody can make sure they get the time off of work for that. Uh. Need to RSVP for next week, six o'clock dish with the commish. Uh, it's going to end up being a special meeting because we'll probably have a court. So need to make sure that everybody RSVP for that. Uh, also RSVP for the Washington Fire. Washington State Fire Commissioners Association Legislative Day coming up on Friday, February seventeenth, so that we get accurate headcount. For that. And then, uh, to, 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 to. My question is to Fire Chief Refurb update on apparatuses. I know that we have some engines and I believe we had some aid cars.
So we can provide that at the next board meeting. Chief Isacello mentioned just one of the engines we're waiting to. Uh, get back here first before we commit to some others. So we'll put on, on the Fire Chief's report update for the next few.
Great, okay. I know we started that process and I was just curious to know with the, uh, turnaround and how far along in the process we are. And that is all that I have, so from home. One request to tag on to that, if we're going to be doing that, just. Because I'm still learning. Even, uh, a year into this, um. If you could show like here, or, because we have the list of like our current apparatus. Um, you know, when they come into service and, and that stuff, but just when they're scheduled to be replaced and basically just show the whole fleet. So we can kind of. See the, the overall, um, anticipated kind of replacement schedule for the next few years. Just seeing it in context as opposed to just the things we're, we're working on would help me to understand the cadence.
And don't, and the, the, the fleet in the, in the RFA plan is the original fleet, so it's well dated. And several places have been replaced and updated, so. We don't use that, we'll get you, we'll get you a better one than I know.
Yeah, as long as we're talking about it, just, just. There's a recon truck out there, Smithsonian's been calling.
Yeah, we have a runway. Their limits are called for you.
Alright, with that, we will go into executive session for review of the performance of a public employee pursuant to RCW four-two dot three zero dot one one zero. Sub one, sub G as in George, and we will start off for thirty minutes. This was, uh, no action to follow.
The executive session has been extended for thirty minutes.